A session to order for April 6th. And our first presentation is for compensation. The compensation philosophy. I think, who's up first? Is it Ashley? Or, or, oh, yay, thank Kelly.
If you want me up here. I was just doing a quick introduction. So this is about the comp philosophy. It's one of the items that have been requested by council to get some more information on. So that's why we're bringing it back. We did not have the opportunity on the agenda to put it with the financial retreat because there were so many other good and important things happening. And so graciously, Ashley's agreed to do a study session a little bit later. Ashley is our total rewards analyst. She is the one, she's the guru who knows comp inside and out. So we've asked her to give the presentation today and talk to you about what she does all day long. And this is her passion and take it away, Ashley.
Well, thank you. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. All right, well, per a council request, today I'm going to present an overview of employee compensation here at the town. So what is a compensation philosophy? It's the company's position about employee compensation. It explains the why behind employee pay and creates a framework for consistency. Employers use their compensation philosophy to attract, retain, and motivate employees. Our philosophy is data driven. We ensure we are paying competitively and fairly so we can recruit the best of private and public applicants. We have a compensation approach that allows us to do that. The town administers these programs in an open, fair, and equitable fashion. Our compensation philosophy has two main goals as identified in our personnel rules. The first is job documentation and analysis, and the second is fair and equitable compensation. For our first goal, we ensure that job title, summary, content, context, essential functions, and requirements are captured in a systematic way that will facilitate job analysis, market studies, and organizational workflow analysis. For the second goal, jobs are benchmarked regularly via market study to ensure town employees are paid competitively. Pay ranges for each job are determined by a combination of market data, benchmark community data, and internal considerations. The town also embraces a pay-for-performance philosophy related to annual compensation reviews and pay increases. Here you can see the standard format for our job descriptions. At the top is the title, the code, and the pay range. Next, the pay range again. The FLSA status, the department, and the reporting structure are listed. Then there's the summary of the role. This is usually a few sentences to a paragraph about the main responsibilities that comprise the role. Below that is the listing of essential duties. Some roles in the town have duties specific to assignments, and you would see that listed in this section as well. The minimum qualification section includes information regarding the experience and education requirements, and below that is the licensing requirement section. Next is the knowledge and skills area, followed by the physical working conditions of the role. We complete biennial benchmarking for all positions in the town. Approximately 50% of the organization is benchmarked each year. We use multiple types of data sources to determine our pay ranges, and we aim to have our midpoints match the average of the market. We do a local municipality comparison for all of our roles, and we also use professional associations when applicable. For example, we use the American Waterworks Association for many of our public works roles. We also utilize a resource called ERI, which stands for Economic Research Institute. This data source provides us with location-specific survey data that helps us see pay rates in the private and public sectors. Here we have a non-sworn benchmarking example using our court interpreter role, which had new rates put into effect in April of 2020. We reviewed ERI data, completed a local municipality comparison, and then set our midpoint to the average of the local market. When non-sworn roles are benchmarked, employee pay is not usually affected. Non-sworn employee pay is only affected when a pay rate is below the new minimum or when the midpoint of the new range increases dramatically in order to maintain market competitiveness. Here we have a sworn benchmarking example using our police officer role, which had new rates put into effect in January of 2021. We completed a local municipality comparison and then set our maximum to the average of the local market. We then calculated our remaining steps by maintaining a 5% distance. When sworn roles are benchmarked, employee pay is affected. Sworn employee pay rates are set to the newly implemented step rates. This resulted in a 6.56% increase for all of our sworn police officers, regardless of their current step. As part of our philosophy to reward high-performing employees, we utilize a merit matrix, which is a part of our pay for performance. The merit matrix is evaluated annually, and it is set up in such a way that the higher the performance rating, the higher the merit increase, and the lower an employee is in their range, the higher the merit increase. Sworn employees progress through a step system. Sworn employees receiving at least and achieved on their evaluation progress annually to the next step until they hit the maximum step for their role. This concludes our employee compensation overview. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Ashley? Was this just a presentation to let us know that there wasn't an ask?
There was a request for a retreat. I just didn't have an understanding of our compensation philosophy approach. It just didn't happen, the time just.
I have kind of general questions, not specific to this, but related. Years ago, when we first implemented the at-will status, had a course, employees that if you wanted to that pay increase that year, you need to go at-will. We're not doing that anymore.
If we didn't do that exactly today, we're given a one-time increase to pay in exchange to going at-will, and that was at a point in time. Everybody hired into the organization from that point forward is hired in under an at-will status outside of police officers. So I have a police officer still up there. Yes, everybody is hired in.
I cannot remember who requested this for the retreat. So if anybody. Okay. Just curious how employees, both sworn and non-sworn employees were compensated. How, just to make sure we were competitive in terms of, we have all this staffing. How do we retain them and keep them here? Did this answer all your questions, y'all? I believe it did. So this happens just throughout the year, essentially different departments. Through the review and different forms of the year, as was shown. So 50% is benchmarks. Yes, I think that that answers my question. Other questions? Ashley, you did a great job. You have a very soothing lovely voice, actually, presenting. I was thinking, you have a very soothing lovely voice as I was listening to you.
Oh, wonderful. I'm so glad. You guys have all given me my Leslie Knope moment. So thank you for letting me present. And anytime you guys want more information, I'm happy to present anytime.
Yeah, you should do all the presentations.
Now Scott wants to even speak for Patrick. He's like, you have a soothing voice.
Chris Payne.
Thank you, Ashley. We appreciate that. Great presentation. Thank you for the hard copy.
Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your evening.
And thanks for coming on the screen so we can see your face, too. I appreciate that.
Of course, I had to.
Thank you. Next, we have Gilbert Regional Park presentation, is that correct? And I got to see a sneak peek of this during Student Government Day, and the students were so excited about the items that they saw in the Gilbert Regional Park. Or potential items in the Gilbert Regional Park.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize, you have to go from Ashley's voice to mine. I almost texted her and see if she could just fill in for me because I found myself.
Sorry, Robert. He did have to turn you down a little bit, though, because you're a little bit louder.
I, I too agree with you on Ashley's presentation. But the good news is, we don't have as much text tonight. We were coming to you with a lot of pictures and videos. So please feel free to ask questions as we go. But if we go to the next slide. Our overall ask for this evening is really just to take a look at what the proposed master plan updates have included and give us any feedback on the overall design and amenities that you see or that the community was asking for. Next slide. Most of you already know Gilbert Regional Park's in the southern portion of Gilbert at Higley and Queen Creek. We'll go next slide. We always have to add pictures. So just a few of those phase, you know, 1B amenities that have opened up. Definitely the most heavily visited park in Gilbert and continues to just bring in more and more people. If you go to the next slide, please. On the project team, for this particular portion of the project, town management, CIP, and Parks and Recreation staff worked on the master plan. I want to give a special thank you to Rick Hooker from CIP and Jenica Horta from Parks and Rep. Both of them really led the master planning efforts when it came to coordinating with the community, coordinating with the design team, and really putting together a very inclusive process that had a lot of community outreach, as well as our partners from Dick's Studio, Mark and Mark Taylor. Go to the next slide, please. So to give you a little feedback on the process, I know we have some council members who are here for the Fall Council Retreat in 2019 and some who are not. So at the Fall Council Retreat in 2019, Parks and Recreation staff reviewed the master plans and what that looked like moving forward. And we received direction at that meeting to really go back to the drawing board and take a look at what that master plan would look like moving forward into the next phases. There were still a lot of questions as to what could be added, what was already added. And we'll get into a little bit of what was able to be added into the earlier phases that were originally planned for later. So to give you a little kind of feel on why some things were moved around and why we went back out for the master plan update. Starting this fall, or early this fall, we started community outreach, and we're going to go into some of the stats along with that, with the focus groups of users of the park, the Parks Board, a lot of presentations to town staff. And we'll find ourselves at Town Council tonight. The goal of this evening is really to look at the amenities, the overall plan, and then be able to come back to council at a future date with a cost modeling and take a look at how we can phase this park into the future. Go to the next slide, please. For the community outreach during a pandemic, so we found ourselves starting this process in the fall, it really was one of our first ventures into how do we provide the community outreach during this time. And I'm happy to say we had a lot of good feedback, and we'll get into a marketing slide here in a little bit. But we really relied upon digital government and our staff and the team from Dick Studios to how we could conduct those outreach meetings and make it very easy for the community, have very interactive sessions with on-screen polling, Q and A. We had online feedback portals, as well as a survey that can be filled out at any point, along with a virtual focus group. So if we go to the next slide, you can see some of that marketing that went out to the community. With the help of digital government, we had over 92,000 impressions for the Gilbert Regional Park Master Plan Update and just over 3,000 engagements. So the community really got involved, and they had a lot of great feedback for us throughout the process. And we're really happy with the way that the community engagement worked in sort of a different format than you had seen previously. Go to the next slide, please. Couple of the planning resources. So when we take a look at what's needed at Gilbert Regional Park in the future, we relied upon that Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was completed in 2014, taking a look at those future amenities that the community requested, along with the sports field needs assessment that was also completed in 2014, 2015, which really took a look at what that 2035 outlook of build-out in Gilbert would need from us moving into the future. We talked a little bit about that community outreach, and then guidance from the Parks Board, town departments, town management, and tonight Town Council. Next slide, please. A little background information. When we completed the 2015 Sports Field Needs Assessment, it really looked forward to say, at full build-out of Gilbert, how many fields are we going to need to serve the community when we reach that level? And it really took a deeper look at not only our own facilities, but school facilities, how the community was using them, and took all those into account to come up with a data of what we were going to be looking at. And if we look at our current deficit, the baseball and softball, youth and adult fields, we're at about seven that we need for future build-out. And the multi-use fields, about 16. So wanted to bring this up now because a little bit later on, we'll also show you what the outlook looks like with the current updated master plan. Good, the next slide. This is just the overview. We're going to get into the Gilbert Regional Park kind of history here. We'll go to the next slide. A little bit of the backstory, especially for some of the council members. This all, really, the process started in 2015. The town had already 47 town-owned acres, and with a deal with flood control, was given 225 additional acres within the basin. And then through community outreach, there was an original master concept plan in 2016. And then many of us are familiar with the groundbreaking and the grand openings that followed, which leads us to 2021 and the master planning for the future. And in the next slides, we're going to go over why we took a look at that master concept plan again. If you look at the overview of this map, you see the 2015, 2016 master plan that was approved. This was done with a thought process that you were only going to have high and dry in that very far right corner. So a very limited amount of high and dry at the time. It was only going to be about 47 acres. And so this was the design that the community worked with to take a look at how we can, what we needed to include, and how we could do it within the basin. And if we go to the next slide, kind of gives you an idea of an overlay on the very far right of how that changed when we went into the master concept planning and construction. And what happened was, we were allowed additional acreage from flood control that was high and dry after recalculation. So it really changed the dynamic of the land that we were able to construct on that was out of the basin. So what you see from it in the next slide is we were able to take those 47 acres up above and parcel those out into three public-private partnership opportunities. So the 25-acre P1 is where the strand will be located, and then future P2 and P3 parcels for future public-private partnership. But then, as we move further down, it allowed us the opportunity to bring in amenities that were originally going to have to be in later phases, later phases, but able to be moved up. So items like that 10-acre event lawn, which has come as one of the most popular amenities. We've been able to do concerts and movies, especially with social distancing. The 7-acre lake, which has been a very popular amenity, along with the sports courts area. For those of you that have had a chance to attend, there's very rarely a time that people are not on the pickleball courts, the tennis courts, and the sand volleyball courts. And I think we all know how well utilized the mountain and playground area are. But some of these amenities were planned for future phases. So knowing that we were able to do a few more of them in Phase 1 and Phase 1B, that's what in 2019 led us to go back to the drawing board to see how can we relook at the future of the park? And if we go to the next slide. Just a few kind of historical moments. Most of you know Phase 1, but the mountain, the falls, and the creek are the, are names for that kind of lower play area. The splash pad is one of the largest municipal splash pads in the valley. It has about 57 different interactive water features. And in a week like this, where it's 90 degrees in April, the community is definitely loving having that on. The next slide.
Is the splash pad on?
The splash pad is on.
Back on, okay, thank you, sorry.
So it is, no, no problem. It was back on as April 1st. We had some warranty work with the concrete that was completed. And so that is on during operating hours, about 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM each night. On the Gilbert Regional Park Phase 1A, so the sports courts were able to be open this summer. As I mentioned earlier, there is rarely a time you go by where these are not being fully utilized. Definitely one of the most popular amenities we have within the tennis courts and pickleball and sand volleyball is really one of those growing sports in the valley that we're going to continue to see an increased need for. If you go to the next slide. Then, as I mentioned before, the Phase 1B amenities that were able to be brought on earlier this fall with the amphitheater and the great lawn and the lake really have led to some really great opportunities for community events. And I think we're just getting started at what that can mean for the future of Gilbert. And we're excited to see how that can be utilized in future years. If we go to the next slide. So now, we're really going to get into those master planning efforts. And we have Chad Attaberry from Dick's Studio, and he's going to walk council through the process of how we went through the master planning and then be able to take a look at those 3D renderings, images, and layouts that the department's proposing.
Well, hello, everyone. Hopefully, you guys can all hear me. And I appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you about the master planning process that we've been working with the town on, as Robert said, for the last eight months or so. So you can go to the next slide. I think Robert and Jenica has put a great slideshow together for us tonight. And Robert did a great job of sort of understanding why we are going through this process. So you can see a summary of that here on the next slide. All of the same questions that we asked in Phase 1. We started to re-ask again as we went into Phase 1B and then on into this master planning effort. So if you go to the next slide, you can see again sort of a summary of those types of questions. And on the next slide, we also have the process that we went through. So it's an abbreviated process of the overall one that Robert described. But it does involve a few key points here. One of them is that outreach effort that was really key. And we did this at the beginning of the master planning process, but also toward the end. So we went through and got feedback before we put any really detailed designs in play to make sure that the right amenities and the right programs and the right overall feel for the rest of the park was kind of carried forward. We also did the same with the early engagement with the Parks Board. And throughout, the town staff has been engaged on a weekly basis with us going through this process. Next slide. So to start out with, again, the program of this park is really crucial because, as you know, and what Robert just described, the park for the first phases is a very diverse park. It has a lot of different types of amenities. And in those categories, it's actually, it's actually pretty packed with things to do. And so as we looked at that huge amount of acreage available in the remaining flood control district areas that will be part of this park, we had options, and the town made a real important decision in terms of continuing that really community-focused, diverse array of programs. So if you can go forward to the next slide, you can see an assortment of the type of programs that were yet to come. And, you know, some of these are obviously very specific type of programs with dog parks and skate parks and bite parks and things like that. But with the various multi-use fields and open spaces and things like that, we also bring on a whole array of other things. You see drone course is added in there, and that's one of the more unique types of programs and things that are considered. But, but really, that's just one of the many uses of a lot of the multipurpose space that you'll see in the park design. Next slide. So what we started with, as I said, when we went to the early Parks Board meetings and the early public outreach, was an idea of a framework. We wanted to be able to build a very efficient way to go forward with the expansion of this park, be efficient with the amount of utilities and connections that we were making, really capitalize on the initial investment. The town has made an incredible investment in reclaimed water, for instance. We were able to come along in Phase 1, right as the improvements were being made in Higley Road, connect into that, bring that into the park. And the pump station and the lake that are great amenities in Phase 1B, they also are what's going to be providing the irrigation for future phases. So in several cases, the infrastructure for this expansion is already kind of in place. And we wanted to make sure that the framework really capitalized on that. In the next slide. So really quick, we can kind of go through a few of these frameworks. One of the key things that was driving these frameworks, along with the program and trying to have that really unique diversity throughout the park, was also the parkway and the road network that comes through the center of the park is also the way we deliver those utilities throughout the park. It's sort of a spine road for the whole park. There's also some criteria by which, you know, we connect with the Oketeo alignment. So as you may know, there's an extension or a connection to be made across that Oketeo alignment, and that bridging movement allows us certain areas where we can have road access back to Oketeo and also allow us to loop our utilities and have other access to the park and those kind of things. Well, those limited locations also sort of drove a lot of the frameworks of this park. So you can see on the next slide here, you know, other options that we considered for carrying forward not only the layout and the design of the parkway, but also, you know, this idea of what were the major themes that kind of drove the forms and shapes in Phase 1, and how could those be implemented in the future phases? So we had this sort of parkway idea or this kind of tectonic plate idea that was really key to all the geologic forms playing off the San Ten Mountains. Next slide. And then, of course, the Arroyo idea, which really also capitalizes on, you know, the idea of this being a flood basin that can take on water and how are we capturing water and using it? The idea of sort of natural park spaces and can the network within the trails and roads actually start to reflect that? So we looked to combine these frameworks. We looked to get feedback on them. And as you can see in the next slide here, as we move forward, we started to also look again at the program mixes with the different frameworks and how certain layouts lent themselves to different focuses. On the left, for instance, you can see again this kind of diverse mix of spaces. And on the right, slightly altered shift of that parkway gave us more of a sports complex sort of feel with like a monolithic area of sports and then a completely separate kind of greenway kind of activity space. And so we got a lot of good feedback from the Parks Board, from the town staff, from our public engagement on these, and we started to make our way toward a preferred plan. So you can move forward in the next slide. So in that feedback, here's some of the great feedback that we got. It was really, like Robert said, a really engaging process. I think in some ways, from having a lot of direct, you know, public meetings and things like this, I think a lot of more people were able to engage fully and really have a full sort of response via survey to all the different aspects. And in that way, I think we got a really good picture of what a lot of people's priorities were. So here's just a snapshot of some of those. There was several comments on making this a destination park. And what that meant for a lot of people was a little bit different things. So yes, have unique features, continue that diverse programming, but also have, if you're going to have sports amenities, have enough that it can be a destination for a sports event specifically, and those kinds of things, and also really community-focused things. So you can see there's something called backyard games, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go here. But, but community-focused spaces and also natural park spaces. Spaces. Next slide. So to look at where we ended up through this process and all the different iterations that we went through on the preferred plan, you would go to the next slide, and we see our first sort of snapshot of the overall plan here, the framework that was essentially a hybrid in some ways of a lot of those, but it also, for very specific reasons, received a lot of good feedback, you know, based on the program mix, the overall diversity, and the ability for community interaction to happen, as well as trying to maintain some natural park spaces as well. So what we're able to achieve here is the necessary parking and the necessary program and sports sort of amenities, but also really starting to tie into the trail networks and the natural spaces as well. So go to the next slide. to tie into the trail networks and the the natural spaces as well. So go to the next slide. So the here's here's where we ended up with um in the uh preferred master plan layout to this point in the process where we come to you tonight and and to get your feedback. Um, as you can see, uh again, starting at at the north end, which is at the right side of the the plan here, um connecting some of the uh ball field complex and sports uh type engagement areas with those sport court areas on that side um is very intentional. Uh, it it really has that centralized location. It also starts to sort of compact and and combine um some areas of fencing, some areas of lighting, um where it also starts to protect a lot of the views uh that we get from the mountain and from the event lawn and the lake and the pavilion. So when we want to have those natural views down uh to the southern parts of the park or to to the uh San Tan Mountains, but we want to be able to keep that too, because it's a really amazing place to be in the park um and to see those views of of the surrounding environment. So so some of the placement was um based on access and others uh really to protect those views. Um, and as you go farther down through this space, you'll see sort of that diverse array of amenities, the the list that you see here. And then you'll notice that in the southern end of the park on the left here, uh you'll see it become a more green and natural area, and I'll kind of dig in and describe that in more detail here in a minute. So we can go to the next slide. So before um we look at a couple of the plan areas in more detail, I think to to continue with that overview, um, they're able to uh play the uh the video through the the WebEx here. Should be able to see kind of all of this in 3D. I hope. All right. Thanks, Judy. All right, well, we can jump ahead. Uh, thanks to that video, we can jump ahead and and go through some of these areas a little faster and hopefully you had a good view there and could see uh some of these things in 3D. So to dig in just a little bit deeper into some of these program and and amenities that we've just seen and and have discussed here, uh, we can go to the next slide here and uh start looking at a few areas zone by zone here. So in the ball field complex, um, wha- what we really tried to do is make a really flexible complex, like like we said, like something that has a a bit of diversity to it, but also can be event focused. So we, for instance, the adult size field quad that we have can be converted and and actually become um 10 softball fields or 10 youth uh fields uh when in combined with the complex uh just to the south of it there. And and so really, there's a lot of diversity here. The the other thing is this event plaza and sort of some of the event areas in the surrounding area, like the food truck zone and things like that. Um, those are really meant to be flexible, not only for the sporting events, but also just other park events to really uh keep this area usable and uh have a lot of uh multi-functionality um all year round. So you see on the next slide here, you can see what that event plaza might look like and and the type of structures that we're looking at with concessions and storage and all this type of facilities the park needs, as well as that main area there with with uh lighting and and shaded canopy area for events uh of of all types. The next slide, please. And you can see kind of carrying forward this idea of the uh the initial phase one restrooms. It really took a a really affordable economic uh material types and added the kind of unique Gilbert regional style to them. Um, and then we want to keep those aesthetics going on to the future phases. The next slide, please. And then a- a- as we look a little farther south, as you saw in the video, um, more of that uh multipurpose field space, which really, again, could be used for all types of different activities. Um, you see fields laid out here that are that full collegiate size uh field. And really, those are mainly for scale. So the idea is to have um the proper uh field type, the grading and the lighting and things for where um different uh activities like sports could happen, but also um really set them up to be used in a lot of different ways for the community, um so that these are really flexible spaces overall. And then, of course, to the south there, this idea of a climbing center, um, something that takes advantage again of this Ocatillo connection that's just further south of of a potentially vendor operated area. Um, but also just combining that with the the slopes of the basin and the hillside, um, the character of the park overall and trying to make these really interesting areas out of the the slopes of the park. If you can go to the next slide, we can see a couple of images of that. Um, and really, it's these opportunities like in the ball field area and and others where we have these pocket play opportunities. Um, you know, small little areas of play, places to sit in the shade and hike. Um, the trailhead, which was, it's more of a trail hub. Um, actually, it's kind of central and it really connects a lot of trails, both from inside and outside. Um, but you know, all of those things are combined in this area. Next slide, please. And you can see here, obviously, um, the separation between this sort of more public space and what the vendor operated area is. The idea is to try to make this hillslide hillside not only sort of an occupiable space, but also i- in some ways, kind of screen the idea that that might be an enclosed kind of fenced off area, vendor operated kind of a space. Um, that whole space with the climbing center, it's a, you know, obviously, it fits right in with the unique programming of the park, but also um it's it's flexible in 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 the different types of uses that could go there. Uh, it's just one really unique opportunity um in terms of of that kind of space with, again, with access to Ocatillo, potentially having um some parking associated with that and things like that there in that location. So great opportunity there for a really unique asset. Uh, next slide. Now I'll try to move through these really quick, just so we can um get to your feedback. Uh, one thing we wanted to do is engage with this for the unique area of the park that goes under the Ocatillo Bridge and come up with things that that really were appropriate for that and very unique for that space. So if go to the next slide here, you can see um this kind of action sport area. And we wanted places that were safe for these type of events to happen. Um, but also really um took advantage of those spaces to make really unique type bike facilities and skate plaza type facilities. Um, you know, we we see these at the scale of a regional park. These really would be sort of regional amenities in terms of um this type of program, but also um places where we could uh implement community art and also, you know, uh a a lot of different functions for for all kinds of uh, you know, teen age groups and things like that. So really unique area of the park here and a and a really great use of this type of space with the bridge crossing. And all, as you can see, trail crossing as well. Uh, next slide. A little bit further south is is again, we really wanted to get into this kind of community focused area and and bring some of these amenities. This is something that we had a lot of discussions with, with our public outreach. Um, and 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 really did kind of respond to a lot of that feedback. So we go to the next side slide, we can drill in a little bit closer here. And you can kind of see again, these flexible community spaces combined with areas um of of unique program uh like uh Ramadas and shady areas, backyard games where we're talking about, um, you know, bags and bocce courts and tennis and horse or table tennis and horseshoes. You know, all of those kind of things combined with a dog park, those are all things where that bring communities together and bring families together. And so, you know, it's a really um great way to sort of consolidate those type of areas in this um southern area, because it's also meant to be a little bit more um passive and natural um area of the park. As this would be sort of everything south of Ocatillo would be potentially inundated with some of the floodwaters in in first. And so we expect those to be a little bit more passive and also a little greener in this particular other area um with that riparian character. So continuing on from the dog park south, uh we look at the next area on the next slide here. And we get into that southern riparian area that we talked about. And and although it is more passive and has those trail connections that we that we talked about and things like that, um, you can see in the blow up here on the next slide that it also starts to bring in some other program types where we have uh disc golf and nature trails. There's also potential even for pop-up play in this area, but but each of these areas would have their own character. So here, any kind of kind of play elements obviously would would be sort of of the edu- educational uh nature play type variety um in this area, and we'd really want to focus on that. Um, protecting the views to the south along the floodway and to the San Tan Mountains. Um, and really just a lot of great feedback um overall about, you know, preserving some uh park space for those green natural areas that we love so much in Gilbert. Next line, please. Um, and as we as we talked about with the trail network overall, obviously, the the park itself is sort of a hub um for a lot of regional trails and and connecting future trails that may occur along the floodway um and coming down the washes. Um, and these these regional trails will connect into the park um and and sort of again, make this park a hub uh for a lot of those type of runners and joggers and 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 bikes and such. But as we go into the next slide here, you can also see some of the um internal trails. Um, we have both hard and soft um throughout the park. We wanted to sort of have those multiple surfaces. And and we also wanted to create loops in the park. And and this has a lot to do with kind of the fitness program that we talked a lot about with um the outreach program as well. On the next slide. And you can see, um, there's been a lot of advancement in this area in terms of um, you know, park type fitness amenities and and how those uh really can fit in with both an aesthetic of a park, but also um just really kind of expand what the trail system in a park can can provide. And so we looked at um different loops of very specific distances, for instance, um, on sort of the west side of the 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 spine road where we had half mile loops, one mile loops connecting to the three quarter mile loop we currently have in the phase one B park. Uh, and so the, you know, along those loops, having other kinds of amenities like this would be a really great asset. Next slide. One one last thing I just wanted to kind of touch on before we kind of get to toward the end here. Um, throughout this, we really also wanted to, again, protect the views of the natural area, but also create views within the park. And we are looking for not only those Instagrammable moments and specifically trying to create um uh elements within the park that really do become that draw and that sort of um iconic uh moments, but also uh public art. And and again, as I mentioned, some of those could be community focused activities. Um, and some of them could be very um specific to the area of the park. You know, with such a big park, you know, having, you know, nature and educationally focused art uh elements in one area or, you know, a lighting art feature that's that's more of a light feature in in another one, like central to the ball fields. Um, where, you know, that would be appropriate, you know, things like that, and having that diversity as well, I think really brings um, you know, a lot of culture, well, quote cultural aspects to a park like this, kind of the central park of of uh the the East Valley. And and so um definitely starting to set up the framework for those as well. Next slide. And you can see kind of what that might be like. Uh, kind of exciting little um element here. We have to have balloons going off from um from all fields and things like that. But again, um, just a really continuation of of the really exciting um type of park um that we have done in phase one and 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 bringing those kind of unique amenities and and community focused amenities to the the future master plan of this park um as we as we've looked at here. Um, one other thing I'd wanted to mention just to again about the basin sort of aspect of this park. Um, it's not just about receiving floodwater and 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 flood control in that aspect, but but also, um, as I mentioned, the reclaim water aspect of this, the 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 planning the town has already done and the investment in infrastructure the town has already done, i- is a real amazing opportunity here. Um, there's a lot of things that we can do potentially to um try to work with flood control and and continue to look at ways of of gaining more um sort of advantageous uh grading and and opportunities within the park for amenities. But also, you know, continuing on with that that idea of this being sort of a connection to nature in the park, um, we do want to look at capturing water in different ways. So using the reclaimed water um is 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 just an amazing thing to be able to to provide green spaces, but also be responsible with water. Um, but with with the grading of this park, we we've also looked at pretty good detail about capturing rainwater and and using it to sort of augment, you know, these these green trailways and things like that in that riparian area in the southern part of the park. So um, that's that's also kind of an important focus of of one of the things we've done as we've moved forward with the master plan design here. Next slide. And just to get to that last point that um that Robert was touching on earlier, um, along with other amenities like Desert Sky uh Park and and this park too, once we get to this full build out of the plans that you see, we really will have sort of um gained a surplus uh with this park in particular um on the baseball and softball uh type amenities. And then again, um, future parks uh will will sort of touch on those other aspects of the field need assessment. Um, but this will be a major component in terms of uh meeting the needs of the community um as identified in that 2035 Fields Assessment um Report. Next slide. And hopefully, uh, we have time for your feedback, but again, um, we will be looking forward for that for uh anything even in the future.
Thank you, Chad and Robert. Any comments, questions? Scott?
I have a couple of comments and thoughts. Uh, it's interesting, you mentioned, Chad, the use of reclaimed water and importance of those natural riparian areas. You know, there's a a very large riparian area right across the street from this facility. Hundred and twenty acres that in the future could be a very uh important riparian area. And And I've always advocated looking to some way that we can connect this site with that across the street. I don't know if it has to be a physical connection over or under legally. But there should be some sort of connection to not only demonstrate what you're talking about, but actually give the public the opportunity to enjoy similar amenity that they already enjoy enjoy up at Guadalupe and and Rainfield. So I and the other thought was the natural areas that you're you're talking about, we we may have an opportunity. I know you had indicated those, the master plan is passive burning areas, some of those natural areas. And we want may want to talk with some people that are in that in that field, I'm thinking of Wild at Heart or Liberty Wildlife, who might be interested in actually locating some sort of a rehab facility that could be a great amenity for the public to see how that happens. I know we've worked with and Robert's aware of the the Burrowing Owls and Wild at Heart and women work with at Zanero. And there may be an opportunity to continue that here, maybe even get them to relocate a facility down here that I'm sure would be very interesting to the public in that natural area to see how that happens, how they rehab wildlife when they bring it to their center and then release it back out into the wild. So just a couple of thoughts there about what we might do with those passive areas. And again, I'll keep advocating for planning for looking at that riparian area across the street, hundred and twenty acres of it as being something that can add to the the experience that people have at this park.
Yeah, I think those are all great points. I think seeing that, you know, obviously the wildlife that takes blood away for their migration patterns and the the amount of life that's already been attracted to the park with the new lake and and all of those type of amenities. I I think one of the great things about this plan, as you can probably see even just by looking at the ball field complex in in scale with the rest of this park is that there there is plenty of space for those things to kind of coexist and those kind of spaces to coexist. And especially, you know, looking south of Ocatillo, you do have that kind of shift into the more passive. And and also sort of, you you know, what that entails is not just some open more open green areas, even things like, you know, fewer lights and other kinds of things. And and it really would be have a slightly different character. And I I know we went through it rather quickly with the trail connections and things, but we definitely are looking at opportunities, you know, for there to be easy connections for people and and other kinds of connections as well in the ways that you had said with those areas. So thank you very much. It's great feedback.
Hi Chad, this is Jan Kaprowski. I thank you for that presentation. I I I did appreciate the comment of the walking and bicycling connectivity to the surrounding street and trail system. I am a little bit surprised that there's not maybe more or duplicate of what's currently at the regional park, considering how popular some of those existing amenities are. And maybe additional for playground areas or for the pickleball or basketball courts, things like that. I like I actually love a lot of these concepts that are brought in. But as a parent of young children, I would also keep in mind that families have children of various ages. So can certain elements be combined so that there's a playground next to the ballpark? Or there's things that younger children can do when their older brothers and sisters are at some of these areas? The ropes course looked amazing, but one zip line is probably insufficient, considering all the kids like light up for just the little tiny ones. Maybe thinking a little bit more about how we can maximize some of those amenities. Another comment was the dog park, I didn't say water area, but I know that like Cosmo Dog Park is pretty popular with the water area.
It's so controversial. Some people will let their dogs swim, some won't. Some people say we don't clean it, some people like Tammy Jo loves it and but she goes home and has a bath immediately. So yeah.
I think we also have the issues with it being a flood detention basin.
To be on put water.
That we can't have standing.
Understood. And it's good to have different amenities at different parks. So Cosmo has the lake that the dogs can swim at.
Yeah. And then, yes, go ahead Chad.
Oh Vice Mayor, I was going to mention, I think those are really great comments and feedback. And I know we we had to pass through some of these areas relatively quickly. But one of the things we didn't focus on is there are pocket play amenities of those extending the playgrounds and opportunities for play in every section. So by the by the baseball fields, by the multi use fields, by the backyard fields. It just wasn't called out as much, but we totally agree with kind of what you're saying is making sure that every time you go to an area that all age groups are accounted for. And then one water amenity that we had in the dog park, you can see it a little bit in the 3D image, but it probably wasn't as zoomed in on. Was an actual splash pad for dogs. So getting away from more of that lake amenity, but having a splash zone splash pad that would be available for dogs and that you can kind of better control that access and the availability of water. So great comments because I I definitely think those have been on our minds.
Yeah, we went through kind of fast, but I I think you were reading our mind because yeah, if we drilled it to a little bit more of the details there, they definitely, I think we're on the same page.
And can the fields be used for parking for major community events?
We specifically do have one that we are we're calling Green Parking. It's just south of the the lake area. And the idea is that it's sort of a flexible space for fair tents or other kinds of things. Set up with the the subsurface kind of reinforcement for that area that allow for all those type of things, including expanding parking when a larger event's happening at one of the other areas of the park. But again, not to just put too much asphalt parking in all at once, have a flexible space that can be used for other things. But parking is definitely in that mix for those that kind of open green space there on the west side.
I think that's a great idea. And then Robert, there was that recent resident that had commented about the skate park in Freestone. Was that person engaged or could they be engaged maybe in future planning of this skate park? They seem very interested.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, definitely. So, you know, I think we're looking at, you know, maybe a thousand level view of of what that skate park could look like. But I think when you look at the space that could be allotted for that, you really have a regional sized skate park. And when we when we dive down into the deeper designs of what that could look like, we have quite a few people who have reached out to us with direct interest in the pump track or in the skate park. So a lot of those people had been, you know, we had talked to them, we had reached out for their feedback just on the size and the scope. But maybe not to the extent of the exact amenities within, because there's still a lot of room for improvement and feedback as we move forward. But just saving the space, knowing that we're going to want more amenities like this in the park.
Kathy, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I just want to thank the team for taking a step back before we just plowed into the next phase and kind of reevaluate it. Because I really think we came up with some great ideas from doing that. So I I'm going to come from two perspectives. One is a grandparent taking young kids, I agree with Yung that making sure that we have more play areas and probably things that are very popular, like the zip lines, so you don't have to wait in line quite so long. But then from being the grandparent and going out by myself or with friends and walking, one thing that I notice is, and it's a new park, but there's not a lot of shade. And as we start getting warm, if you don't get out there really first thing in the morning, I think that that will be a little problematic. And so maybe some temporary shading opportunities throughout the year that you can kind of shift around. Because I love getting on those trails and know how far I'm going to get to go and combine the trails. But I don't want to get out there and not have any place to have shade or to sit down and rest. Hopefully I don't have to do that very often, sit down and rest, but you know. So I think shading will be important. And just a a quick side comments, not really about this, but I wanted to thank Robert and his team for the Sister Cities park, where we're building down there by the pump station. So it's an area that's already there and we'll be looking at raising some funds to do a little park area where you can reflect, but also celebrate our sister city relationships. Again, tying into the art, an opportunity to take a picture of either, you know, something that represents either community. So appreciate all of your work on that. I think just connectivity, again, if I'm walking the trails, I want to know how many miles or how many, how long that one's going to be if I connect it. Again, I don't want to get down stuck in the riparian and my car is two, three miles away and
Got to make it back.
I have to call 911.
Just pull it over, just call it over and back to the top.
But great. No way. Any other comments or questions? Robert, can you talk about the trails and how Kathy brought up a great point? How long those are and you'll be able to hold like five Ks and a marathon or those kinds of events right down here at the regional park?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. So Chad could probably go into the distances a little bit better than I do, so I'll defer to him. But, you know, Councilmember Tulkey, to your point, that is something that we would put a high priority on is, you know, when you see the connectivity of these, the signage is so imperative and the parking lots and where they're located and and making sure that you can really use this entire park all day long. But then kind of know where you are and then be able to, you know, part of the goal of that destination park is being able to come here with your family for a full day and never have to leave or even a weekend for that matter. So I I think that's kind of what we're gearing for. And especially really appreciate the comments about the different pocket play areas and and the connectivity. Because we've saved some space for those and and can illustrate those a little bit better as we move forward. So but Chad, do you want to touch on the distances real quick?
Sorry, real quick, I I I touched on it briefly, but we tried to create very specific fitness loops. But overall, there are miles and miles of overall pathways and trails within this plan. Real quickly, if you can imagine that event lawn and the lake kind of combined at the walkway that goes around those in the current park, that's three quarters of a mile exactly. And we actually do have quarter miles markers on on that pathway. Extending that trail down around the large sort of green kind of multi use field area there, that would be a about a mile and a half loop total, just so you can kind of get that scale. So you could have a 5K run just right there without ever crossing a road or or anything. You could have two loops around there, you have a 5K fun run. So you can obviously imagine that you could get your five mile, your 10 mile loop in here if you were to go down to the southern end and and back up, you know, you know, to the north end of the park and those kinds of things. You really could start to and 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 even other types of events that that were triathlons and all kinds of other things where you're, you know, coming in from Ocatillo Road or 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 other sort of connections that this park could have and and bringing people down into the park as a start and finish line and those kind of things. It really will be sort of miles and miles of of parks literally or of trails literally here. But but the intent, as you mentioned, is to have those well signed. And and so that if I want to walk around a half mile loop and get to those fitness stations, that will be in a compact area for me, you know, and I can walk off to my car right next door and and, you know, get my bottle of water and etcetera. So yeah, all of that is sort of intentional at this point.
Mayor, one thing I'll just also mention is we'll bring Desert Sky Park, the updated master plan at a at a future meeting. But when you look at the potential of the connection of those through the marathon trail using the space of Desert Sky, the space of Gilbert Regional plus the trail space, you know, you could be looking at a loop where you could do marathons internally without ever going outside of those parks and trails. So the opportunities are endless and it's definitely something we're excited about and making sure that we create these access points with with those types of ideas in mind.
That's great, because we know the feedback that we get when we have a triathlon, I mean a marathon on the streets of Gilbert. And it's not positive to council members, it is not positive feedback from the public.
Robert, you'd mentioned spending the weekend, what about overnight yurts or other types of camping facilities?
In the works.
Councilmember Anderson, I think everything's on the table for us. I think, you know, we get excited when you think about that destination amenity that really serves so many different members of the community. It's not just a sports park, it's not just, you know, that natural area, it's just not the event lawn. I mean, really, you know, the goal is is whatever type of whatever type of hobby, whatever type of activity that you're really interested in, you're going to be able to find it at this park. And so yurts and things of that nature, we're totally on board for. And that's and then we still have obviously the public private partnerships in the front of the park, which also open up opportunity long term.
Hey Robert, Patrick, one last thing, Councilman Tulkey had commented about shade. And we talked about that, the exact team level, some feedback creating some cool zones and some additional shading opportunities throughout the park for those months when it gets warm, giving people an opportunity to still get outside, but get out of the sun.
Yeah, Patrick, it's it's a great question. I think, you know, really appreciate the feedback from today. Because I think our main goal is is to collect that and then be able to go show it in the images when we come back to council. Because I think a lot of the times it's difficult to show some of the shading here because it'll block the overviews of the actual amenities underneath. But we can create some images that kind of shows that 3D rendering of what those shade opportunities, what those cool zone opportunities and those specific tree types that we want to introduce to the park that'll create those cool zones. And so we can create sort of a more of a deck of of shows those specific amenities and how shade will interact with the park. I think it's a a great point and something that we can show in our next round of of review.
Some questions, I could mayor. One, maybe I missed it, this is more of a, I guess, practical question, but how many bathrooms are planned? That is important. Is there an answer to that?
We have a, we have a total of five new facilities shown in the plan. And a lot of that will be sort of that ongoing coordination with flood control and the different areas that we can create, you know, structures and facilities that, you know, can be built economically outside of the kind of the big, the flood zones and things throughout the park. So right now, we're showing sort of five new facilities in different areas of the park.
And I can look at Ocatillo, I guess that was my main question.
There is one south of Ocatillo, yes. But it's closer to the Ocatillo Road alignment, as you can imagine, it's kind of up near that green space.
Chad, we have three existing restroom facilities, just to kind of give you a barometer on on what's in phase one and phase one B.
Do you have water fountains at all those facilities or another water fountains at other locations that may not be at a restroom?
You mean drinkable?
Drinkable water fountains, yeah.
Yeah, water fountains would be key to bring to those locations. Also, you know, as we talked about that sort of above ground water feature, that's a little bit more controllable by the dog owners. You know, we we talked about putting a drinking fountain at that location also, not just associated with the dog park, but for people that are on their way to like need bottle filler for using those trails. Also, we talked about that trailhead location that's kind of a hub to these trails in the northern part. And we expect to have a drinking fountain and other kinds of things at that shaded trailhead location.
Are any of these trails, Robert, applying friendly?
Yeah, Councilmember Yentes, they are. So I think a lot of the the thought process that went in was to make it multi-surface and be able to have the amenities and the different types of surfaces that would be sort of equestrian friendly. And and those exist actually in our current phase one and phase one B. And and was actually a lot of feedback that we received from the neighbors is wanting to be able to connect from the trails on horseback and then be able to kind of be able to go through the park. So definitely will be included.
My only other thought was you get a lot of people from town, obviously, visiting or even just transplants that choose to live here. And, you know, it's not knowing a lot about why we're considered the Valley of the Sun. I don't know if there's different aspects to incorporate northeast, southwest when you're facing different mountain ranges that are educational in nature. Because you can see so many different mountain ranges from, you know, this kind of geographic. I mean, it might be cool to educate people about, you know, their landscapes surrounding the park. Since it's a regional park, it's, you know.
Yeah, Councilmember Yentes, I think that's an excellent point. And that's why we wanted to sort of make sure that we save those art vista points so that we can really not only do, you know, public art, but also that cultural and that, you know, Gilbert historical outlook where, you know, create spaces that really tell stories. You go to these different sections of the park and the You know, public art, but also that cultural and that, you know, Gilbert historical outlook where, you know, create spaces that really tell stories. You go to these different sections of the park and the surrounding area. So I think it's a. It's a really great comment and and something that we can definitely include into the park.
Sorry, two more points if I could. One might be more for Patrick, just on these P3 opportunities. You know, obviously we're looking for opportunities there for uses. They're going to benefit from the regional draw. Obviously, there's kind of mutual benefit there because a lot of those assets will also kind of draw to that area in the regional park. But just ways that we can look to generate revenues for the maintenance of this and offset some of the, you know, costs. I know obviously there's a lot of program areas that are going to generate fees and. Everything like that, but to the extent that we can maximize. Those opportunities to offset. Financing is, you know, obviously a priority. And then any kind of plan for. Accessibility, not just, you know, obviously a lot of that we facilitate through wave binding, which is just kind of. More of, I guess, in the weeds, but. Accessibility from engagement, especially needs community. I know we've had feedback from citizens wanting to incorporate more. Functions in our parks that are specific toward like autism community and things like that. Anything I think we can do to layer some of that in here, I think would be great as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Yentes, really excellent point. That's something that we. Try to focus on all the time, especially with the accessibility of making sure that every single area of this park is accessible for. You know, for all people and as we dig down deeper into the to the specifics, similar to to the way we did the mountain, we really lay out all the different access points. And then meet individually with some of those special needs groups. To really make sure that it fits their needs and and interacting at the park. It's kind of how a lot of the the mountain and the. We call it the creek we're designed was to create some of those those safe spaces. And we will continue to do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Thanks, Chad. I think I saw Jenica on there too. Thank you for the presentation. The students wanted to know when they saw this, when I was going to build it, like, when are you going to build this? And I said, first we have to figure out how to pay for it, then we can talk about it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We really appreciate the feedback and we look forward to talking to you again with with some of the updates and and. From the feedback you're able to provide tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Chad. Thank you. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting and head down to our council meeting, everybody.